Today is Monday, November 11th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. And Chairman Kerzak, will you please call this to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken in the following manners before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone or a device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. And this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your future viewing pleasure. Please join me. Pleasure. Pleasure.
Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Callaghan?
Here.
Michael Manzella is absent. Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Gallo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Kerzak?
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the October 18th, 2021, regular meeting. Anyone have any concerns about those minutes?
I'm sorry. Jennifer Souter sent me a correction to just add within the minutes, a discussion about the easy ready.
Yes.
In the body of the minutes, not in the condition. So I've gone ahead and made that change.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Anyone second?
I have the motion by Jennifer Souter and a second by Avon Clayton. All eligible to vote, and Mr. Lambert is abstained. All eligible to vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the request for reconsideration of decision for Beach Club Asbury Partners LLC, 1500 Ocean Avenue.
Barbara, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, Mr. Henry is recusing himself, but he'll be back.
Michael is sitting here. He's not going to participate in this.
Okay.
He's on for the next application. Jason is both the planner and engineer on the project.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, do we have someone representing?
No. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Michael Gann from Lieberman, Blacker and Sinkovich, on behalf of SAW.
Smith, present here at your desk, please.
Thank you, members of the board. Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney from Gibbons PC, and I'm here on behalf of Asbury Partners LLC, the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Chen, it's basically your motion for reconsideration.
Thank you. I will repeat everything that we placed in our written letters, which I believe the board has in front of them. Basically, we're just seeking a reconsideration of the board's approval of this pool club, simply because after the approvals were granted, the group discovered that FEMA had corresponded with the city and determined that the project was not in compliance with the FEMA guidelines. And we believe that this is a good cause for reconsidering the approvals and taking another look at these plans to make sure that these are compliant with FEMA regulations before it is approved. We cited in our letters the case law that provides that boards do have the power to reconsider their own decisions. And we believe that this is, whether or not that this is compliant with FEMA regulations is a good cause for this board to reconsider its decision and take a look at it just to make sure. If the application is not compliant, then the city is at risk of losing its participation in the flood insurance program. Thank you.
Thank you. This board approved the application for preliminary and final major site plan approval for permitted use without any variances after 14 days of public hearings. 14 days. The approval, the application was first heard on May 29th, 2019, and ultimately this board approved the application on June 7th of 2021. It is extraordinary and unusual for a planning board to reconsider an application that has already been granted. The public hearing is closed. In this case, it is particularly unwarranted as the basis for the request for reconsideration has no legal justification or substantive justification. First, there is an ordinance here in the city. The city adopted the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, Section 24 of the city's code. In that ordinance, the city council specifically delegated to the city manager the authority to determine whether or not an application complies with the city's flood damage prevention ordinance. The city council adopted that ordinance with the specific purpose of delegating authority not to this board, but to the manager. And the manager has acknowledged that that is the city's process. Now, in the initial letter that SAW submitted, it cited the March 1st, 2021 letter from FEMA as a basis for reopening. But SAW neglected to include the second letter, which was the city's response dated April 13th, 2021. In that letter, the city manager acknowledged that it is her responsibility to review applications for compliance with the flood damage prevention ordinance, and that such review would occur upon the submission of an application for building permits. Asbury Partners has not submitted an application for building permits yet because it must have the planning board's approval first to do so. Therefore, there's no basis for this board to reopen a public hearing to undertake a review it has no jurisdiction to do, and that can't even occur until the building department has received our plan package. It should also be noted that in that ordinance, the city council delegated authority to the zoning board of adjustment specifically to review if any variances would be needed. Now, I'm not suggesting this application even needs a variance from the flood damage prevention ordinance, but the city council could have chosen to delegate authority to the planning board, and it didn't. If for some reason this application didn't comply, it would still go to the zoning board of adjustment and not to this board for review. Now, besides being completely unjustified on a legal basis, there's also no substantive basis to reopen this application. And again, I'm not asking this board to make a determination as to whether the application complies with FEMA's NFIP regulations, but there was evidence in the record specifically that in fact, the design of this building does comply. As you know, when FEMA wrote the letter on March 1st, it suggested maybe. It didn't. And when it said maybe, it referred to exhibits A11 and A14, which were elevations presented to this board on May 29th of 2019. All of you know there was a long road between May 2019 and June 2021, and that involved resubmission of plans and other supplemental materials to address the board's concerns and the public's concerns. Those resubmissions happened on June 14th, 2019, August 1st, 2019, August 29th, 2019, October 18th, 2019, November 27th, 2019, and on and on and on. There were multiple resubmissions. In one of those resubmissions, particularly on August 29th, 2019, we submitted revised elevations. Those elevations were revised specifically to address questions that the DEP had raised in connection with compliance with flood hazard regulations. With those elevations, we also submitted to the board a courtesy copy of a letter we submitted to the DEP from GMS Engineering. In that letter, which was ultimately marked as A76, it specifically states that this building was designed to fully comply with NFIP regulations. Again, I'm not asking this board to determine whether it does or does not comply, but any assertion that this should be reopened because the building doesn't comply is unfounded in the record. Once this board adopts a resolution, we will make an application to the building department. Our plans will be reviewed by the city manager in connection with the professionals the city has retained to assist her in doing so, and she will make a determination as to whether the project complies with NFIP. As such, we implore you not to reopen this hearing. You have already voted to close it. To please adopt the resolution that memorializes your decision, and if there are any objectors that do not care for the resolution, their recourse at this point is to take action in court. That is the next step. So we thank you for your time this evening, and we hope that you vote against reopening the public hearing.
Thank you.
Irene, do you have the packet of exhibits?
I do.
Okay, why don't we enter them in, please?
And let's do them in chronological order.
Makes sense.
So A, I'm sorry, let's call this O.
Whatever the next number is in the sequence. Do we have that?
Can we mark these separately as R exhibits? Because they're not formally part of the record of the public hearing. I understand you're marking them for identification later, but maybe we could call them R exhibits?
Okay, so let's call them R. R-O, and that'll distinguish it from the other exhibits. And that would be the initial letter outlining the position and the request by Mr. Lieberman?
Yes.
And that is dated, what, June 15th?
This is June 15th, letter by Mr. Lieberman, dated June 15th.
Okay.
And that will be R1?
R-O1.
Oh, I'm sorry, R-O?
Or R-O1, yes.
Okay.
And that consists of the letter plus four sets of exhibits, A through D. Is that correct?
Make sure. Yeah.
Yeah, and the exhibit, so that's that. And then, what's the next document?
And then the next document will be the insight
Okay.
Letter dated June 24th, 2021.
Okay, make that RB.
RB, sorry.
O for objector, B for board, A for applicant.
Okay.
RB1. That would be the insight letter in response to, responding to the board with the procedure outlined.
All right. And did you want to mark the city's letter?
Yes.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the city's letter next, or is it Jennifer Smith's letter?
It's part of Jennifer Smith's.
Well, that's included as part of hers.
Okay, let's do that then. So, and that'll be that. So the next exhibit will be a response letter from Mr. Lieberman dated July 2nd, 2021.
Okay.
And that will be R-O2.
Correct.
Okay, and then the final exhibit will be the letter from Jennifer Smith's office dated July 16th, 2021, and that also includes
The letter from the city manager.
The letter from the city manager.
A statement issued by the mayor and council is attached to her letter.
Correct.
Okay. And that would be
And that will be RA1.
One.
All right. That is everything.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to proceed, or you want the
Well, if you need me to help, then I will.
That would be great. Actually, I'd like to ask if the, anybody on the planning board has any questions of the attorneys, or any procedural questions? If not, then if you could
Yeah, this is basically a motion by Mr. Lieberman on behalf of his clients, which is the group SAW, for reconsideration based on claim of newly discovered evidence or evidence that he claims to be new, and that wasn't provided to the board, and that would be relevant to the board's procedure of adopting or granting preliminary and final site plan. There's been a response from both the board engineer, which is clear, as to the present procedure that we have, that we have had for the existence of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Ms. Smith also outlines her position, which is essentially what she stated, and within that exhibit that she submitted, there is a letter from the city manager as the designated ordinance and/or statutory appointed individual to be the floodplain administrator that characterizes the application, and that it would be adequately addressed at that level. And then there was another response by Mr. Lieberman's office, that he still thinks that we should open it. One important point that we should remember is that in all of my resolutions for all of the approvals, for all applications that have been approved in the waterfront redevelopment area, that I have always put in a condition that is very extensive that says if any outside agency alters, changes, denies, does whatever, and this is where I might disagree with Ms. Smith, that you can't just go ahead and work with that. You have to come back to us. Anything that alters our approvals, our site plans, in any way, that's subject to the board's review and the board's reconsideration of the application. I understand that our technical argument was that if there's an issue with the technical items given to the floodplain administrator, in that case, that would go to the zoning board of adjustment. But that's a very, very way out area, not likely to occur, and/or if it did, more than likely, it would affect the design of the project at some point, and it would still have to come back to us. So this is not the last time we would see this application, and this is what we do for all of the applications that we have approved in the waterfront redevelopment areas since it began. So there is an adequate mechanism in place that will make sure that FEMA guidelines are adhered to, and if they're not, we have a person in the city who's qualified and designated to flag it and send it back or not issue a building from it, and the project wouldn't get built.
Jack, can I just clarify, because I heard you make a reference, and it was a reference that was also made in insights letter and both the attorney's letter. What do you mean by outside agency?
Anyone else in the approval process, post-approval by us.
Okay.
Whether it be
Wait, post-approval, oh, by the planning board.
City administrator, FEMA, CAFRA, any agency. I've used this whole blanket kitchen sink approach. And yeah, DEP, doesn't matter who it is, if they alter our approvals, they're coming back.
Okay. I just think the reason that that matters is because there are a lot of kind of conflation or references to like, well, DEP approved it, and now FEMA, now FEMA doesn't have permitting jurisdiction here. So outside agencies means it comes down to our municipal approval.
Sure.
And that municipal approval is really what's standing in between us and NFIP compliance. And that's what it very clearly states, that that's the procedure.
Yeah, that's fine. I designed that clause to make sure that nothing would slip or get past us.
Okay.
And that if somebody else has a crack at this to say yes or no, and if they say they're going to change it, we want to see it. That's not what we approved.
I know that from reading the, both our engineer's letter and the city manager's letter, accepting the responsibility and understanding what this is, and this is the process that we use for every application, where, as Mr. Serpico said, that we do have that phrase that happens in all of our resolutions. So if there is an issue, it will be caught there. It is not within the purview of the planning board. But I am certainly, Mr. Serpico, if you want to go through and go through with a vote?
Yeah, and in this case, we have two members of the board who voted against the application. This will not affect that. You're now just deciding the motion for reconsideration based on alleged new evidence and a procedural issue. Okay? So you're entitled to vote on this. Wouldn't alter your vote in any way. You're just voting on whether you think the case should be reopened based on this or not, and whether or not we have an adequate procedural place. And so it would be a motion to either grant the application or a motion by Mr. Lieberman's office or deny it.
Also, one other procedural note, Jack. I did not vote on the
Right.
Previous application.
Yeah, so you should recuse.
Yeah.
You're recused. Yes. So there would be six eligible members to vote. We do have a quorum, and the six eligible members, it doesn't alter your vote the other way unless someone wants to tell me that this is going to, obviously, if you reopen the case, then that's a different matter. But if you vote to deny this, unless you're going to tell me that you're changing your vote for some illogical reason, the vote would stand the same as it was before, five to two, or, yeah, I think it was five to two. So that would be the motion that should be brought before the board. Someone should move it, second it, and vote on it.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
And it's specific to the city's procedure. I think it was outlined by the city manager and her letter, and then a letter from the city saying what the procedure was, that this would be built to the most restrictive design flood elevation currently available. What does that mean?
Means that the city manager is going to pay very close attention, and I assume it means that she, whatever the appropriate most restrictive guidelines that she has to follow will be adhered to.
But
Straightforward. I don't know that you should participate in the discussion.
I participated in the discussion for the application, but did not vote.
You're either in or out.
I would just proffer that the city manager should follow the floodplain development ordinance.
Sure.
Because I don't know what the criteria, and I spent a lot of time with the flood, I don't know what the most restrictive design flood elevation currently available is. Maybe it's a question for our engineer, but
Floodplain ordinance is the law.
Right.
And she has to follow the law. Pretty straightforward.
All right. And she didn't actually clearly indicate in her letter, she never mentioned the floodplain development ordinance. So it'd also just be the understanding that she knows that that's the criteria that she has to follow.
If she's the person who's been duly appointed for this, whether she delegated that to TNN or somebody else, we have to go on a clear assumption that when you accept the responsibility to do the job, you're going to apply the appropriate criteria because you're the person so licensed to do it.
All right. It's just not outlined in the way that she says she's going to follow it, but I can raise that otherwise. But I think if we're stating here that the city manager will follow the floodplain development ordinance, then that's not as
As is done in all the other approvals
Any concern?
For the P-trump.
Great.
There's no public?
No.
There's no public participation. This is a board discussion item only.
Okay. Does anybody else, any other board member have anything? Okay. All right. Then can I get a motion to to move this
Either grant or deny the application.
Not grant or deny the motion.
Yeah, a motion, same difference. Not the, the application before, it's not the application that you filed. And I should make that clear.
I think we need to make it clear what we're voting on.
We're voting on Mr. Lieberman's submission.
Right.
And basically, it's a motion.
Right.
So we need to vote on the motion.
I'd like to vote, I'd like to put out that I'd like to vote on the motion or propose a motion to, keep me honest, Jack, to deny
Yeah.
The request.
One second. About one second.
I have a motion by Barbara Kerzak and a second by Rick Lambert. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Recused.
I'm sorry, Mr. Henry is recused. Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes, but may I say why for the benefit of the public?
Absolutely.
All right. So the floodplain development ordinance, which is a municipal ordinance, actually clearly delineates whose jurisdiction this is, and then clearly delineates what the process of appeal would be, which has been explained, would go to the zoning board of appeals. And so I believe it's not currently in the planning board's jurisdiction, but that that floodplain development ordinance should be followed.
And Eric Lambert is recu, I'm sorry, Eric Gallo is recused. Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Kerzak.
Yes.
Okay, motion denied. What about June 24th? Did we all forget about June 24th?
There is no public
There is, I'm sorry, there is no public comment. Unless, that's why we have an attorney here that is representing SAW.
Correct.
And at this point, we're done.
Yes, we're off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, next
Why don't we take a moment to let the room clear?
Okay.
Shame on you all. Oh, shame on you all. We're the ones that get the bad.
They're not being very pointed at all.
June 24th, the building collapsed because of structural damage, okay? This is what this pool club is going to do. It's going to damage our building. Are you all going to take care of it? I want to go on record that
Shame on you all.
Today. Shame on you all. I want it on record, okay? You guys are participating and damaging our building. They're going to put steel piles, dill sheen. Why are you going to make sure it doesn't damage our foundation?
There's no public comment, thank you.
Will the rest phase of this discussion be public? The next
I don't know, the next part is
The next part is the resolution and approval, and that's a doctor
Get up there.
So The resolution and then the discussion
No. I don't know, you have to contact the city manager. She undertakes that process. She would be able to We don't get involved
The planning board, we have, did that go before the city permits, and that's when all that evaluation is
I would suggest you contact the city manager, find out what her procedure is. Eric, that's
We have to even move, we're done. This is done, man. No one. Thank you. We have 154 apartments in danger.
Okay, everyone needs to clear their room. We have another application that we have to hear. Thank you very much for coming. I apologize.
All right, the next, the next discussion, next application up for discussion, actually, it's referral request for the, for 649 Madison?
Oh, no. What just happened?
Send it over to
All right, this is, right, this is a referral of 649 Madison to the Design Review Committee. So we'd like to
I'm here for this.
Okay, that's okay. All right, we just like to understand, I mean, actually, I would like to understand, and I'm sure that the other members of this panel would like to understand also why we're here to vote whether or not it should go to the Design Review Committee, and I have to say that we're kind of perplexed as to why we're going to the Design Review Committee.
The reason, how, what's the normal procedure for a matter to go before the Design Review Committee?
The, so in the bylaws, it doesn't state what the actual procedure would be. It just states that there is a Design Review Committee, and the planning board can refer an application to the Design Review Committee.
Or also, if an applicant chooses to
They can request.
Want to
Yes.
Irene will reach out to us, and we will get together and have that discussion.
But usually not
The reason I suggest
It usually goes to DRC before it goes to
It's happened both ways. Yeah, the reason I suggest that it should, in many cases, come to the board so the board can say, let's send it over, is just for opening, being transparent. Okay. That's the only reason, because one time we had an application that was sent over, and Werner Bonbrunner asked specifically if there was any, if it, was the public allowed to attend, did the public know about it, et cetera, et cetera? And the answer was no, and he said, so then it took place behind closed doors. The answer was no, it didn't take place behind closed doors. So I felt from a legal perspective
It usually goes to DRC before it goes to...
It's happened both ways.
Yeah. The reason I suggested that it should, in many cases, come to the board so the board can say, "Let's send it over," is just for opening, being transparent. That's the only reason. Because one time, we had an application that was sent over, and Werner Bonner asked specifically if there was any... If the public allowed to attend, did the public know about it, et cetera, et cetera? And the answer was no. And he said, "So, then it took place behind closed doors." The answer was no, it didn't take place behind closed doors. So, I felt from a legal perspective that we should have some mechanism in place that when we do have a Design Review Committee meeting, it's open in a room here or someplace else within the city hall, members of the board attend, publicans come in and sit down, but they don't participate. There's nothing behind closed doors, and there's nothing being done by sleight of hand. Going back, smoke filled rooms, etc. That's the only reason.
Do we have any representation of 649 Madison here?
No, there is no.
Then, we can't...
We can just...
I'm gonna say no.
To deny this, and we can get it over.
Right, because I'm gonna...
A motion to deny the request.
I'll second. Second?
I have a motion by... Sorry, Mayor Moore, and a second by Jim Henry, was it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we take a individual vote? Because I would like to state why.
Sure.
In my statement.
Mayor John Moore?
No, for many reasons.
Do you wanna speak?
No, just because...
And this is, I'm sorry, just to... Just to clarify.
What's that?
There was a motion to deny.
You're right. You're right. I voted the wrong way. So...
You should vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, to deny. Okay.
Wait, I have a quick procedural question. I'm sorry, Jack. Don't we have to carry the application if we're not?
Well, just, the application is still pending.
Right.
You're just denying them their request to go to the DRC.
They were scheduled for...
Okay.
They were scheduled for a special meeting. It wasn't a forum. Now, all of a sudden, it was like,
Got it.
"Let's go back to square one for end run."
Got it.
And nobody can understand why.
Right, I missed the connection.
That's it. I believe it's scheduled for December.
It's December. I think it's actually already on the schedule for December 6th.
Okay.
All right.
So, let's start over again.
There is a motion to deny. Councilwoman Avon Clayton, how do you vote?
Moore wants to, Moore would wish to change. Can I?
Yep.
Okay, okay. I voted the wrong way. I'll admit it. Did I make a vote? So, how dumb can I be? So, I vote yes.
Thank you. Yes, to deny.
Yes, that's correct. Happens all the time, John. It's not a dumb thing.
And she always repeats it. It's when you're making a motion.
You get confused. A yes is a no vote.
Right.
For the applicant for the request.
It was me throwing that for many reasons. It's creeping up. So, from now on, just be a simple yes.
All right. Let's continue. Councilwoman Avon Clayton, how do you vote?
I also vote yes, for the same reasons.
Thank you. Jim Henry?
I also vote yes for the reasons specified by John and Avon.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galfo?
Yes, to deny.
Rick Lambert?
Yes, to deny.
And Barbara Kerzak?
Yes, to deny, and here's why.
Okay.
What, the way that the Design Review Committee generally works is that people that come and request to come to the Design Review Committee are usually... I don't wanna say it in a negative way, but less experienced. They haven't been in front of the boards. They need some help. They want to make sure that everything is, you know, that they have everything that they need, and that everything's all right. So, in this case, it's just odd that someone that already had a meeting scheduled, which means that the application was deemed complete, would wanna come and see us. And beyond that, if the Design Review Committee did happen to meet, they also would, any changes would have to be made in time for our professionals to be able to react to those changes by way before December 6th, which is the application.
And the changes would have to be approved by the board. Yeah, the Design Review Committee wouldn't just... They're not delegated to go off on their own.
They're not. They're not. They're making suggestions that that should happen, and it's really unfortunate that they weren't here to represent themselves. Because maybe we're missing something. We could be. But since they were not here to represent themselves, I vote yes to deny.
Did everyone vote?
Yes.
Eric, did you vote?
Yes.
Yep.
It was a unanimous yes to deny.
Okay.
So, request to go to the DRC. Denied.
Okay. Let's go on to an application.
Yes, indeed.
All right.
One second.
Eight, okay.
Let me just get this... I have very, this one, the prior application has its own pad. Had to have its own legal pad, so move that over here. Okay. And now, we'll go to the current legal pad, regular legal, so that we can speak to Mr. Beekman in dissonance. I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay, I have to recuse myself because I didn't participate the first time?
Yes, sir. And that you did not listen to the recordings. So, yes.
For the record, Mr. Henry's back on. We've got to take, why don't we take a roll after the mayor recuses himself?
All right, let's take a roll. Sir Mayor John Moore is recusing himself. Councilwoman Avon Clayton? Are you here?
Yes.
You're just taking a roll. I can see you. Michael Manzella is absent. Jim Henry?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Galfo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Absent.
And Barbara Kerzak?
I am here.
Rick is here, and Barbara Kerzak.
I am here. All right. If you could introduce yourself, and we can move on.
Jeffrey Beekman, Beekman Law Firm, Osher Grove, New Jersey. I represent the applicant on this next application for 810, 812 Main Street, Asbury Park, also known as Block 2602, Lot 2, on the city located on Main Street and First Avenue. We came before the board virtually back in April. This is only our second hearing, but we've been bounced back and forth several times. So, we have a follow-up hearing with some additional changes. Matt Wilder was sworn in at the last hearing. He is our engineer for the application. We also have this evening tonight, Jason Hammerhand from Mode Architects, as well as Brian Left. And then, to my left here is our client. All of us appeared virtually except for Jason. Jason is appearing on behalf of his associate at Mode, Dan Conda Torre. So, we wouldn't have to swear.
Yeah, well, we're gonna swear everybody in because it's been quite some time. Sir, please raise your right hand. So, I'm gonna swear testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it for us.
Sure. Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R. My business address is 130 Central Avenue in Island Heights, New Jersey.
And you are what?
I'm a licensed professional engineer.
And you were previously qualified at the prior meeting before you testified, correct?
Yes, I was.
So, there's no need to re-qualify him, Jack. You can proceed. Now, while we're doing that, why don't we get Jason and Michael sworn as well? For the record, gentlemen, please raise your right hands. You solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
Yes.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Michael Sullivan, Mark Higginson, Ford Planner.
Thank you.
Jason Fichter, Inside Engineering, Morgan Engineering.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Do you wanna, you want me to swear the rest of witnesses, or just stick with one at a time?
No, we'll take them individually.
Great, thank you. Matt, you were the, you are the engineer with Morgan Engineering, hired by my client, our client, to provide the site plan for this project. Is that correct? Yes. And as a result of our hearing that we had back in April, there were some modifications that were requested from the board and based on the discussion at that time. Is that correct? Yes, it is. Can you go through with the board some of the changes that were made? And I think it's probably easiest to start at the Main Street side and work your way around the site. Okay, sure. So, we've shared our latest plans on the TVs. I will highlight areas with my mouse, but I'll also...
Excuse me. I'm sorry for the interruption. I don't mean to be rude at times. I have the attendees at the top of my notes from April 21st. Rick, Jim, Barbara, Alexis, Jennifer, and Eric. Is anyone here?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
I don't have her listed.
You don't have Avon listed as here? The absentees were Michael Manzella and John Moore.
So, okay, so then, Avon was here. Sorry. I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. I'd rather make sure that we have all the right members.
Since we're in an interruption. So, during the first virtual meeting, I had to step away. I introduced the meeting. And so, none of the exhibits were marked into evidence that evening. So, if you don't mind, Mr. Beekman, can we go ahead and mark those first exhibits into evidence? And they were the... They were the first plans submitted by Mode Architects dated... Sorry, excuse me. I have a key here. Dated September 30, 2020. And so, we'll mark that as A1. And then, a revised architectural plan dated 3/31/21 by Mode Architects. That will be marked as Exhibit A2. And then, a property survey. I don't have the date on that. Do you?
I do.
Wilder?
Yep.
I think you have it. Oh, or no, that's here.
October 23, 2017.
October 23, 17. A property survey that will be marked as A3. And then, finally, a site plan by Morgan Engineering dated 3/30/21. And that will be marked as Exhibit A4.
Matt, was that the original date of this plan, or is that the revised date?
Excuse me. Before we continue, I was not here.
You were not here?
And...
Okay.
If I remain, I'll listen.
You can participate.
And I...
But you can't vote if we vote tonight.
I know.
And if we have to come back,
Then I'll listen to the tapes.
You'll clean it all up and go with that. But legally, you can participate
in the discussion.
So, Matt, if you could just refer to your original plan date and that latest revision that we presented for the April hearing? Sure. So, the original plan date was actually May 26 of 2020. That 3/30/21 revision was revision three.
Yes, and that was the one that was shown on the screen on the day of the April 19 meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be marked as Exhibit A4. Thank you. That is all.
So, tonight, we will mark, we have a revised exhibit for the engineering exhibit. We'll mark that A5.
Yes, and what is the revision due on that, Mr. Wilder?
8/12/21.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Great, so that will be the plan that we'll be referring to this evening. So, I'll go back to my question. If you can update the board with the changes that were made to the site plan, beginning at the Main Street side and working around the property? Sure. So, currently on the screen and the plan that I'm referencing is Sheet 2 of my plan set, which is the site plan. Along Main Street, there were really fairly minimal changes on this plan as it relates to that. The first real change when you work from the Main Street side to the back is the rear access into the building, where there's a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, a handicap ramp, some stairs, and a tenant shed. This area had been reworked out of some comments that we received from the board, specifically as it related to the tenant shed. The inclusion of the tenant shed, which obviously made a lot of sense because we had some underutilized space underneath the building, required us, in an effort to maximize the size of that shed, to rework those areas. So, that shed is currently, it's five feet deep, and it's 16 feet wide. The thought is that each tenant would have a five-foot by four-foot area. The height has not been finalized yet, but we're thinking it would be comparable to the area underneath the building. So, we anticipate that it could house some decently sizable product, whether it be surfboards or things of that nature, in those storage sheds. Right next to the storage shed, towards the south, you have the stairs that I previously referenced and a switchback handicap ramp. So, this ramp has been redesigned, not only for the tenant shed, but there was a request that we add some additional outdoor storage for trash containers. Previously, we had the trash containers sort of right behind the bike rack. And what we've done is we've sort of reworked the area to provide that area of trash enclosures, and then another area that's adjacent to Parking Space 5. We're showing nine trash receptacles. I don't think we'll need that many, but we do have that ability if we do need that many for the occupants. And that's on either side of the walkway between the dwelling and the parking spaces? That's correct. That's correct. So, continuing on, the only real additional change that is reflected on the site plan itself is that the northeast corner, which is, we added a stop sign, but we've also restricted the turning movements to right outs only. At the prior meeting, we had discussed traffic quite a bit and how vehicles were accessing and exiting the site. And because the vehicles would be backing out down the drive aisle, the concern was trying to back out and then go towards Main Street. So, we've added a sign that restricts turning movements to right outs only onto First Avenue. Moving on to Sheet 3 of my plan set, this just goes into a little bit more detail with the handicap ramp areas and the stairs. There was a comment about degrading, and we had some elevations that would allow rain, stormwater runoff to go underneath the building. So, what we've done is we've just taken the area underneath the building where sort of the overhang is, and we've raised that grade to make sure that we're really not getting any significant runoff underneath the building. Everything sort of pitches away. And we also, on this plan, provide a cross-sectional detail of the proposed handicap ramp, so you guys can get an idea of how it works with the ramps and the landings and the width that's provided. Go, before you switch. Yeah. So, the dashed lines that are above the parking spaces there? That's the back of the building, correct? Correct. That would be the overhang of the, what I guess is called the second floor. So, the covered parking, this would be the overhang of the building. And that area, if you could just explain how that runoff will be from that point back towards First Avenue? Sure. So, what you can see is with the asphalt areas, we show a 22-foot contour within what was previously marked as Parking Spaces 3 and 4. Those are the two parking spaces that are covered. So, you'll notice that the bottom of curb, as you get closer to that tenant shed, is at elevation 22.6. So, we have six tenths of a foot of fall from here out towards First Ave. The same goes for the area underneath, sort of where the overhang exists. Because we are, you know, chasing grade and trying to get up to, or get down to the back of the building, or up to the parking lot, however you sort of wanna perceive it, we've raised the sidewalk that is in between the trash enclosure areas and the trash container areas, so that the only real water that you would get towards the building in those areas would be if there's wind-driven rain, or if you have a heavy rain where there's some splashing effect going towards the building. Everything else will really just, would go towards the parking lot. And again, you'll see a 22-foot contour on the southern side of the parking lot, and we show a 22.7 elevation in between the two trash areas. So, you'll have a couple of tenths of fall from that elevation towards the parking area and the drive aisle, and then the whole drive aisle, as it does today, directs a stormwater runoff into First Avenue. So, nothing will be draining towards... Oops. Nothing will be draining towards Main Street, and everything will be draining away from the building with these modifications that we've made. And we won't be draining towards Lot 3 as well, correct? Correct. Now, there's sort of a swale, if you will, that already exists between the two properties. So, no, everything will drain towards First Ave. We should not have a negative impact on any adjacent properties. Great.
I just got a question on that blowtorch on the top.
Sure.
So, the sidewalk that's between the garbage cans, if that leads to the ramp, the handicap ramp that goes down to the door that's at the bottom, down at elevation 18.3... ramp that goes down to the door that's at the bottom down at elevation 18.3, I imagine there's going to be some sort of inlet, I'm using a grandiose term for what's probably going to be smaller, but there's going to be some form of capturing some runoff that might make its way down that ramp down there?
Yeah, so you'll have some sort of drain, I truthfully anticipate sort of like a sump inlet. The amount of runoff we're talking about is a very small amount of runoff, but as I indicated, if you get some driving rain, you could get some, some rain that actually does go down the sidewalk. So my thought there would be sort of a, an ADA compliant, maybe a 12-inch grate drain that just has stone underneath to just infiltrate the runoff.
I don't know if that's the right solution so close to the building. I don't know if it could be incorporated in the plumbing design, or if it needs to be pumped out, or if there's a connection that could be made somewhere.
Yeah, we can take a look, I mean, so right now, the, we, so the elevation that we're talking about is really if we capture it in the first, in the first, what I'll call the first ramp at elevation 20.7, we can take a look at potentially designing sort of a bubbler system that allows some surface runoff out to First Ave. I mean, we do have about a foot of grade change between the bottom of that ramp and the existing grades at the property line closest to First Ave. So if we did provide some sort of perforated bubbler system, that would allow the runoff to sort of spill over towards First Ave before it accumulates at the rear of the building. So we could certainly look into that. I think we, you know, based on the elevations that I'm seeing, we should be able to design a system, whether it be, you know, a four or six-inch perforated pipe that provides that, that means of outfall for the stormwater runoff.
Okay.
And we'll do whatever would be satisfactory to either the engineer or the construction department, correct?
Yes. And then the real last, I guess, significant plan change we made, we did make some notes and details, but the last real significant change we made pertained to the lighting. So we were, we took a look at the existing lighting that surrounds the site, and we were actually able to sort of pare back our proposed lighting design. There's actually existing street lighting on First Ave across the street, and there's existing lighting on Main Street. We were able to analyze those lights, as well as some existing building-mounted lights on the retail building that this property wraps around. And when you take all those existing lights into consideration, we were able to really just reduce our proposed lighting to, to three lights. Only real one of them is being external. So the first, and I'm now on sheet four of five of my revised plan set. The, we have one light above what were previously parking stalls three and four, which are the two covered parking spaces. There's a light on the facade of the building there, just to simply give some illumination to the parking space on, the parking space on the south side of the property, and a little bit for the, to provide a little bit of, of light towards the parallel parking spaces. The parallel parking spaces are mostly getting their light from the street light across First Ave, as well as an existing building-mounted light on the east side of the existing commercial building. Besides that, we also have one light underneath the building, which is to just illuminate the, the tenant shed, the walkways, the stairs, and also those two parking spaces underneath the building. And then the last light, which is on the right side of the plan, we sort of prepared a separate analysis for that light. It's just a rooftop, sort of just a, a switch light. It's more for maintenance purposes, it will not have automatic timers. If there's a maintenance employee going to the roof to do some work, and it's dusk or dark, they'll turn on the light. If there's nobody up there, the light would be turned off. So this is a really low wattage light, and as you'll notice, if you sort of refer to the isometric analysis points, you'll see that the light is fully contained within the rooftop area. So this will not create any spillage. And again, like I said, it's important to note that this is only turned on on an as-needed basis. This is not going to be on an automatic timer, it would just be for when maintenance operations are occurring on the roof during dusk or dark hours.
And with that light on the roof, the reason for that is, I think, when we were originally here at the last hearing, there was a possibility of considering that as a roof deck area to gather?
That's correct.
Correct, and we determined that that would not be permissible because there has to be a separate access off of the roof in order to do that?
That was my understanding, yes.
So the, the general tenants are not going to have any access to that area, correct?
That's correct.
And you indicated that that would be a switch that would be turned on by the maintenance person?
That's correct.
Would it have some kind of automatic turn-off in the event the maintenance person left and forgot to turn that off?
Yes, I would think that we'd probably provide an automatic timer of one hour if the light was going to be turned off, or if it turned off while the maintenance operator was still on the roof, they would simply go and turn, turn the light switch on. Again, this is not meant to provide any significant means of illumination for the tenants or the development, it's just simply to provide a safe illuminated working environment when maintenance operations are occurring, are occurring in dusk or dark hours.
Oh no, you can jump in, that's fine.
So I just wanted to point something out for the board in this lighting analysis that seems that two of the lights in that analysis are on an adjacent property building. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just highlighting. Just to follow up with that, you don't have an agreement with the adjacent property owner in order to operate those lights at the same time that your lights are going to be operating?
Not as of now.
No, wait.
Yeah.
Tell him, tell Jeff.
Yeah, my client indicated, not as of, as of now.
So I understand the lights you're referring to, two of which are on another person's structure?
That's correct.
How do you do that?
So we, we believe that we would be able to get rights to, to operate those lights at the hours that are needed by our application. The alternative is, we provide separate lighting on our property, and we run the risk of hotspots occurring where you have multiple lights sort of doing the same thing, and you're going to get increased levels of illumination.
Before we would approve that, you'd have to supply us with permission, some, some type of easement. And you need not only their permission to do it, you need an easement to go on there and maintain it and so on and so forth.
Well, let me ask you this, Matt, can we put lighting comparable to what is on that adjacent building within our site?
We can.
Okay.
Previously, I'm not sure if the board recalls, we had some bollard lighting in between the parallel parking spaces and that adjacent building. Your engineer aptly brought up the fact that the bollard lighting that we were proposing was only four feet tall. So if you had vehicles parked, the vehicles would potentially be blocking that light. So the alternative really would be to put some sort of low-mounted bollard light on the opposite side of the drive aisle with a houseside shield. That shield would prevent any light spillage towards adjacent Lot 3, and would focus the light towards our development. Again, these are low wattage, low height lights. So in the event that we were not able to come to an agreement with the adjacent property owner, we would be able to provide our, we would be able to provide the light on our site with adequate illumination for, for safety for those parking spaces and drive aisle.
So, so, so I have a couple of questions, just to follow up. The analysis you did of the lights that are on the adjacent building, that you believe you can get access and permission and legal permission to utilize and operate in tandem with the work, what was the analysis that you did?
With respect to?
The lights. How, how did you determine that those, that's the illumination for the, of those lights?
Based on site investigation. So we took a look at the lights, and based on the, the model and make that we saw on the building, we looked at the program that we used and tried to select what we believe is that same light. I can't guarantee that it's the exact same wattage, because there's no way to determine the wattage from a visual inspection, inspection of the outside of the light. But we believe that we have selected the, the same light based on, you know, the program that we use and our visual inspection of the property.
So, so, so you didn't do a field analysis of what came of, or don't what came?
We did not.
So that's your best guess of what that is, but it's really not a modeling of the exact light?
That's correct.
So we don't know that's actually the way it's going to work?
Correct, we did not use a light meter in dusk hours to ascertain what the, the illumination from those lights were.
Have you done a plan that shows the alternative to this, where you would use bollard lights and the effectiveness of the bollard lights naturally in the driveway and the walkway?
So what I can do is I can open up the prior site plan that we did, which was revision three.
As identified as A4?
That's correct. So these had the four-foot bollard-mounted lights, as I discussed, whoops, that correctly should be located on the, on the other side of the property, to ensure that no vehicles were parked there. So this is essentially what the proposal would be, would be these types of bollard-mounted lights. I can't say the exact spec as of this moment because we haven't done the analysis, but it would be something similar where we have these bollard-mounted lights on the opposite side of the road. I think it's also worth noting that, and I'm going to jump back to A5, which is the current site plan. We propose a, a, a six-foot solid fence along the eastern property line up to the front setback. So the, the intent would be to, A, put a houseside shield on the back of the bollard lights if necessary, which prevent light spillage to, to, towards Lot 3. But furthermore, you'd have a six-foot solid fence, which would be two feet over the height of the proposed lights, which would again act as a buffer to eliminate light nuisance and light trespass onto that adjacent property. I don't, I don't foresee any type of issue if we can't come to an agreement with that adjacent property owner to get some bollard-mounted lights that illuminate our, our drive aisle and parking area adequately.
So Matt, let me, if I can, let me understand, where are these bollard lights on the design that was marked as A4?
Sure, so on the screen I'm sharing right now, there's one indicated here, which says "Be at four feet," and then another one that says "Be at four feet here." That is denoting the bollard lights at four foot, four foot height.
I'm not seeing your arrow, I'm sorry.
Oh, is it not showing up? All right, I clicked one.
Yeah, that's better, okay.
So there's one there, and there's the other one is there. So those are the two bollard-mounted lights we were proposing previously, adjacent to the parallel parking spaces.
Okay, and, and that simulation that you're showing, that's where those bollard lights would, what's the word? Light up?
Sure, so these contours are the isolux contours when we run the program to show, they each represent a different light level. Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't recall specifically what these do, but this one appears to represent .5, this one looks like it represents...
I think you have to click on it.
I did it again, I apologize. Let me see if I can click these lines. So roughly where that contour is, or that selection is, that represents a contour isolux.
If you click close with the upper right hand, sorry.
That's what's, that's what's causing my problems?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. But at least, at least we can show it.
Anyway, I guess I'll click it.
So hypothetically, if you're looking at the west side of those bollard lights, the spillage over into the neighbor to the, to the west?
Right.
That, that's what spillage you're going to see based upon what you originally proposed?
That's correct.
Now, with what you're suggesting, if the wall-mounted lights on the existing dwelling there doesn't work, what you're suggesting, you're also going to have a shielding from that six-foot fence on the opposite side. And from what I'm seeing there, where your location of the bollard lights, that's not quite getting to, the lowest level is not quite getting to the fence or just about at the fence?
That's correct.
So from, if they're reflecting the opposite direction, the assumption is that they're not going to quite get to the property line. Is that accurate?
Yes. So the benefit here is, with the lights where they were previously proposed, it's difficult to stop them from throwing too far. So you have a certain wattage of lights that you can propose, and you have to propose one in this circumstance that doesn't throw as far to ensure that we don't impact adjacent Lot 3. When you look at the current site plan, if we were to flip those bollard lights to the other side, besides having the ability for the houseside shield, having the six-foot solid fence would actually allow us to make those lights a little bit brighter, to throw a little bit farther, but I wouldn't have the same concern, and we would obviously submit a revised lighting plan for review, but I wouldn't have any concern about them throwing towards adjacent Lot 3, because not only do we have the houseside shield, but we have the six-foot solid fence to be a barrier between the proposed light and the adjacent Lot 3.
And if I understood the location of the bollard plan on A4, it looks like they're not at the property line, but actually off the property line a little bit, and you would be slightly, would you be more on the property line with what you're proposing?
We would actually shift the bollard lights further to the south. So these bollards were dictated for really two reasons. First is we wanted to illuminate the parallel parking spaces, the second reason was really that we wanted to illuminate the driveway. If you look at the lighting plan that's currently shown, we have, as I indicated, a light across First Ave that actually does provide some illumination for our driveway. The light is sort of just off of the screen, but it's sort of just above the north arrow, if you see, can't click these, but right above the north arrow, you'll notice elevation or light levels, let's say 2.0, 2.1, that sort of is in the general vicinity of where that light exists. So that light does provide some illumination as well as the building-mounted lights. So that would be a separate analysis that we would have to do to ensure that we still have adequate illumination for the parking areas and also for the drive aisle.
So hypothetically, let's say we didn't have those mounted lights on the adjacent building. Can you put two bollard lights on the east side of this property and adequately light the parking area?
Yes.
And not spill extensively over into the, what is that, Lot?
Lot 3.
Lot, no, not Lot 3, the Lot at the corner. Is that Lot 2?
Oh, the lot we wrap around?
Home drugs, that lot.
That is Lot, let me see here, Lot 1.
Lot 1, I'm sorry. So can we, can you design bollard lighting on the east side that would stay within, or mostly stay within our property?
Yes.
Do you think that makes more sense than trying to get an agreement with the neighbor?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, we, we're trying to, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, what we wanted to avoid was the potential of their lights running with our lights, but we could certainly create a condition where our lights illuminate just the areas that we need to. Again, we're not talking about a, a parking field, we're talking about an area for six parking spaces. So I, I think we could adequately illuminate our area without the adjacent building-mounted lights, without real difficulty.
Unless there's any objection with the professionals, I think that probably makes more sense.
I still have one question.
That's fine, I understand.
And I say, I know where you're going.
Yeah.
Is, is, are you, do you think it's possible to, I have concerns about the floodlight that's pointed on the back of the building, what's the height of that floodlight?
12 feet.
12 feet. Are you able to use bollards to avoid using that floodlight?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, like I said, we, we run the lighting and we, and we model the light, and you'll, you'll notice that along the eastern property line, again, these X's with the numbers, they represent light levels. So with the light that we selected at 12-foot, you'll notice that we basically have zero or 0.1 at the eastern property line. We certainly understand that Azrae Park is a stickler for lighting. We, we always spend a lot of time discussing lighting. If, if they, if there's a preference to bollard lighting, that's low-level lighting to even further ensure there's no impact on adjacent Lot 3, I have no issue with that, and we would be able to design that without a problem.
It's on the back of the building, between, it's...
Can you see if you could click it?
I'm trying.
I know.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
It's sort of right where I selected, it's not the exact spot, but it says "Be at 12 feet."
So almost the center of the, of the building on that second, off that second floor.
It's just C, it's like, I don't know what C is. The, the, can you point out the floodlight again?
Sure. It would be this, this designation that says...
So there is, there is shielding on that, let me, let me explain to the board why I do have some concerns about it, even though it's LED and more directional, it still is 12 feet high and pointing out, and I have concerns about the neighbor. And if we can avoid using that, even though it has some shielding around it and it's not your typical floodlight, I think we should try to move off of that. I also think... I also think that the combination of the Ballard's on the east side with the six-foot fence is really gonna tone down the lighting and really be efficacious with respect to helping to keep the light from spilling there. And, um, I'd love to see how it works, and I think that'll work with the underbuilding lights in there, that should all come together. And you can model all that.
Hundred percent, yeah, we, we model the fence as essentially a barrier, we provide the height. Um, and, and like I said, it, it's really no, no change in the design, but, um, I, I understand the point, it's well-received, and, and it's a change that we'd be happy to make.
So really, you only have the one floodlight?
I hate to interrupt with a procedural question, I'm, I was trying to wait for a moment that wouldn't be too interrupting. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you have me, you do have me in attendance, because-
Yes.
Okay, perfect, because I had one meeting that I wasn't supposed to make, and then I, but Zoom was all blurred, and I remember reviewing everything. So I just wanna make sure, and I was trying to find the minutes.
Yes. You're in seat number six.
Okay, perfect.
I don't remember where I was seven months ago, but-
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, um, so, so the answer would be that we would have one under, underbuilding light. Uh, we'd have the one light on the roof just for maintenance purposes. And then we would have, uh, several Ballard mounted lights, or Ballard lights on the eastern side behind that fence to illuminate the remainder of the drive aisle and parking areas.
And I agree with your approach to slide the lights further in, so that we're not spilling out on the first avenue. I think that the other, the previous submission showed a lot of spillage out of first avenue.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so from an engineering standpoint, I mean, I, that, that sort of summarizes the changes?
Hold on, let, let me re-
Oh, sure.
So, um, one, one of the things I wanted to ask, I heard your testimony earlier, you were talking about the right turn only at Main Street. My recollection of, of that discussion, which drove your revision, was a lot to do about the potential conflict between vehicles and pedestrians. So, some sort of signage warning system, something like that at the sidewalk. But the reason I bring it up now is because you modeled in the street light, and the neighbor's lights, and your lights, and at that driveway, we're only shelling three pence of flood candle, plus or minus. It seems that that area, and Mike, if you can contradict me, please, if you disagree, but it seems that that area should be getting more light for the, the safety of the conflict between vehicles and pedestrians.
Okay, um, I mean, I, I know they do, uh, uh, they make the stop signs that are solar-powered. I'm hesitant to use those because of our proximity to the adjacent property. But I can take a look at doing some sort of, um, light underneath that sign, a very, very low illumination light, to just make sure that the stop sign's illuminated. Um, we can also put a crosswalk, uh, and an additional signage for, uh, potential pedestrian crossings to provide that additional, um, detail and sort of warning that there, you know, you could have pedestrians crossing as you're leaving the property. You know, the, the problem is the, the, how far the right-of-way extends beyond the limits of the property. Um, but again, I think we can put some additional signage, and maybe a, a very low wattage light near the stop sign to make sure that it's, it's readily visible during nighttime hours.
Well, it'd be nice to get, you know, one to two flood candles on, on that sidewalk.
Okay.
What's the finish between the curb and the neighboring property that has those other lights? Uh, I'm wondering if outside the right-of-way, in that section there, there's an opportunity for some sort of light, since it's very outside of sidewalk.
Uh, yeah, so if, if you're looking at, and I've jumped to, uh, probably easier on my site plan, the area in between the property line and the curb-
Yeah.
Um, is, is all concrete, and we show the limits of the concrete. So there is, um, there is some availability for light, uh, a, a light on the northern side of the concrete sidewalk. Currently, lot one, which is at the corner, um, all of their parking spaces are, you, you pull in, you back out onto First Ave, that they don't have a, a, a parking area, if you will, that has a, a centralized location for, for accessing it. So the whole area in front of that, in, in between that use and First Ave is, is just all concrete. As you get past that use, you get to a more traditional concrete sidewalk. So we would have some, uh, some ability on the north side of that sidewalk to, to place a light, if, if that's what, uh, is the, if that would address the concern.
Well, to, to Jason's point, I think, I think, understanding the pedestrian safety, I think, don't slide those Ballard's too far away. Let's, let's, you know, if we're talking about getting one to two at an intersection, I think that's okay, and so we should shoot for that. Um, I think there probably should be pavement indicators as well as on, on your property, or that, you know, a stop bar or whatever it is, nothing in the public right-of-way in terms of paint or anything like that. And, and to, to maximize, uh, understanding of, of that, the public sidewalk.
Absolutely.
It's not, it may look like a parking lot, and you're going up the grocery, but it's not, it's something.
Yeah, we could certainly put up a, uh, put, put a stop bar on the property. Um, a, a crosswalk that far back, I'm not sure the purpose it would serve, but we could provide additional signage, um, to make sure that it's abundantly clear that there, you know, you do have pedestrians crossing the property.
Thank you. Just in terms of pedestrian circulation, you kind of went through the ramp before. I know the bike rack is, is sort of a, you know, movable thing, but it's shoved right in the, in the walkway.
Yeah, it's, it's also shown, uh, sort of a lot larger than it actually would be, from a scale perspective.
So how wide's the walkway?
The walkway is, is a five-foot walkway.
So, if you have a bike across that, the bike's gonna be taking up the entire walkway?
Well, right, so what we can do is we can do a couple of things. We, again, we have the additional room, uh, behind and in front of the trash receptacle area, which is sort of on the east side of the building overhang. Uh, we have to play around with the sidewalks to provide a, a logical solution for the bike rack. Previously, we had, um, lights and plantings on the western side, so maybe we'll revisit, potentially relocating the, uh, bike rack into an alternative location. Um, and it might, again, might be revisiting the sidewalks, uh, to join up the pa, the trash receptacle area, so rather than have a concrete sidewalk between them, you butt them against one another, um, to create a more uniform, uh, composition. And again, we'll, we'll find a, a suitable location for the bike rack. The intent is not to have the bike rack, uh, block accessibility either to cars or for pedestrians accessing them.
Are you gonna be detailing the, uh, the fence, or is your landscape architect gonna be detailing the fence?
So as of right now, the, the proposal is just a six-foot solid fence, we have not decided versus vinyl versus wooden. Um, if, if the board has a, a preference, you know, we'd be happy to consider it. But right now, we're just proposing a solid fence, um, we just wanted to make sure that we were showing that there is a, a, a visual aesthetic buffer between the two uses, since the adjacent lot three is a residential use.
I think we, you know, when we get to that, that section, so it's about five, four or five feet to the other property, but their fence is right there, their existing fence.
Correct, their, their fence is, is, so their property, uh, their concrete actually encroaches onto the subject property. Um, so I'll zoom in a little bit. So you'll notice, again, that these little triangles are a concrete hatch. Um, so the, the concrete for adjacent lot three actually encroaches onto the subject property about, about two feet, maybe slightly over in certain locations. So that sort of does limit the location where we can put plantings and fencing. Uh, if you refer to our landscape plan, we wanted to try to provide both, both a, a permanent screen, uh, from the fencing standpoint, and also a, I have a problem, and also a, a solid fence. So, that, that was the reason why, you know, we, we knew we were limited on space, with, space with respect to plants, so we wanted to make sure we included that, that six-foot solid fence to act as a screen as well.
But your fence doesn't seem to go the entire length of the property line?
It stops at the front yard setback. And the, the, the simple reason we did not include it to the front property line is we, we did not want to request a variance for a six-foot solid fence in the front setback. Um, and, you know, I don't know, I don't, I'm, well, now, because I, I only have one USB cord. So, and, and then we also didn't wanna have the fence extend too close to the street, um, and then all of a sudden potentially impact sightlines with pedestrians. So, we, we thought that, uh, stopping the fence where we did with the landscaping, was appropriate from an aesthetic buffer, uh, from, to adjacent lot three.
I believe that we're gonna need to know what kind of a fence it is.
Okay. What kind of fence would it?
Solid, I think a solid, can you see?
Okay, so the proposal is for a vinyl fence, six-foot vinyl.
That's, your planner?
Vinyl, uh, is solid.
Yes, it is. We already pretty have that, yeah.
Wouldn't be my first choice. You know, I, I usually recommend, uh, you know, a durable wood, you know, cedar, or something very durable that's got like, like a translucent stain on it, uh, not pressure-treated. And another wood on board, because they tend to have flintiness and they can see through them. So I would suggest a wood, which has a finish that picks up on one of the colors of your building, from an architectural standpoint.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Cedar it is.
Great.
That's why you don't ask the engineer. He's always gonna pick wrong.
Anything else, Matt?
I, I don't have anything else, um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions or elaborate on anything.
We need, we need to make sure that we've gone through the whole report on whatever, whatever's missing, because I don't think that we've done everything on the engineer's report.
But just, just one more stuff into the fence.
Go ahead.
I just wanna get back, I just had to, I took a moment to get some of the site, uh, that we have on here. So the existing, there's an existing, it looks like there's about a, a four-foot or forty-two-inch chain link fence from property next door. You're gonna meet that fence, is that your intention?
We are gonna abut the back of their fence.
Abut the back of the fence.
Our intent is not to tell them to take down their fence.
Right.
So, the-
Just on, I think the latest, uh, letter was July twenty-third, correct? Two thousand twenty-one, from Insight?
Yes.
Irene, let's mark that. B one.
B one.
That will be the, uh, Insight Report. July twenty-third, is that correct?
Correct.
Last revised, revised report. Thank you.
So I'd be happy to go page by page, if, sure.
Anything that, that has not been satisfied?
Okay. Um, so-
We're not going.
I'll jump to, uh, page three, which talks about the completeness review. Uh, item three talks about providing a pavement width within two-hundred feet. We agree to provide that as a condition of approval, and we, we will update the plans to show that. Uh, I believe we've provided the information necessary for this board to, to understand the scope of the project. Um, the same goes for, uh, number four, with respect to existing utilities. Uh, I guess I will, uh, elaborate that we did confirm that water and sewer service will be taken from First Avenue, so we will not need N J D, DOT approval for, uh, road opening permits to go into Main Street. And also, we don't have to worry about pavement repair or anything like that within Main Street. But we will, again, provide, um, and our revised plan did include some additional information on the existing utilities that we found, but we'll extend that to two-hundred feet beyond the property. Item eight talks about a color rendering, which Jason Hanrahan of Mode has for the building this evening.
And, and he will be showing that to us?
Yes, he will.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it has been submitted.
Okay.
Uh, number ten speaks to the proposed use, which, uh, again, ground floor, uh, retail, and then four residential units above. Um, if you have specific questions on the layout of the floor, uh, we do have Mr. Hanrahan, but, um, the, the proposed project is relatively simple in that respect. Moving on to the, uh, development review, um, number thirteen, I believe we addressed by speaking about the refuse enclosures.
How are they being accessed? In and out?
So they're gonna be rolled to First Ave to, for pickup, so the, uh, individual tenants will, will fill up the cans and roll them out to First Ave for pickup, and then they will be rolled back. Regarding-
Can we also specify that we will not be rolling them into the neighbor's area?
Of course.
Okay.
It, it will be in front of the, our property, in First Ave.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, relative to signage, um, again, the, the architectural exhibit we have, uh, does provide some information, um, but the intent and, uh, we, we are showing, so just identification signage along the west side of the property, along Main Street, and then we're also showing a commercial, uh, a forty-square-foot commercial sign. So, again, the, the really only real signage would be, um, as you're walk, walking along Main Street, consistent with the other, uh, tenants and, and businesses along Main Street.
And, and that conforms to the city's ordinances?
We are not requesting any variances for signage.
Okay.
Um, number fifteen, uh, the aesthetically pleasing, I, I believe the exhibit, uh, the color rendering we present will, will satisfy that. Relative to lighting, I, I believe we have gone through these comments, um, including F, which talked about the, the rooftop deck, which is no longer proposed, and rather just, uh, maintenance areas. Uh, for areas of pavement repair, um, we will, on a revised plan, indicate those portions of concrete that need to be completely removed and replaced. Um, several slabs, uh, in between the property line and the curb have base failure. Um, so those, those concrete slabs need to be completely removed and new slabs poured. Uh, we will denote those areas on our revised plans.
Thought I saw on your plan that you already made a mention to that as well, though.
We did, we placed a note on the plan indicating that areas of industry pair, uh, both concrete, uh, pavement and/or curb, um, will be, uh, replaced, but we can physically denote the exact locations for those areas, just so we're, we're on the, all on the same page.
Thank you.
Um, storage for residents, item number twenty-three was addressed with the discussion on the storage shed. Twenty-six, we spent, uh, quite a bit of time, um, speaking, uh, last time, at about vehicles exiting the property, and how, uh, the only real logical solution is to have them back out the drive aisle, although not ideal. Um, we did discuss that at the prior, uh, hearing.
And just as a reminder, when we were discussing that, Matt, um, we also talked about possibly removing one or two spaces in order to give a little more opportunity to turn around on-site. Uh, but it's, it seemed like the board's proposal of six spaces is appropriate, is that accurate?
That was correct.
Great, thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, the next section, which is considerations on, uh, page six. Um, I, I believe, uh, we, we spoke about, uh, the method by which we would drain the proposed handicap ramp, and, and we will work with Insights Office, whether it be a bubbler, or some other mechanism, to, to make sure we don't have an issue with water collecting against the building. Uh, regarding thirty, uh, item thirty-three and N J DOT approval, I don't envision any, uh, work within the DOT right-of-way, again, all of our utility connections will be in First Ave. But if we do need DOT approval, uh, for some reason we can't get a water connection in First Ave, um, we did get will-serv letters for both water and sewer, um, but if DOT approval becomes required, we will obtain that. And then regarding sewer connection fees, we obviously agreed to comply a, and pay whatever sewer connection fees are appropriate for the project.
Sewer's available on First Ave, then?
Yes, it is. Uh, and then from additional considerations, uh, we did discuss the, the proposed handy, the proposed ramp from the parking area to the rear of the building. And then the rooftop deck, again, is no longer proposed, rather just, uh, sort of a maintenance area on, on the, on the roof. And then, um, other approvals, uh, we take no exception to providing those. Uh, we will provide, uh, you know, copies of the will-serv letters, uh, for util, for water and sewer, and then we'll also obtain approvals from the fire, police, and, uh, any additional outside agencies.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Unless anybody has questions, it, it would-
Okay, does, uh, any, uh, planning board members have any questions for, uh, the engineer? Are we okay, uh, Jason?
Yeah, we-
Based on your report?
We did everything throughout this testimony, yes.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
Irene, what's your thing?
Okay, no other questions, um, uh, open for public, can I get a motion to open public questions? Second.
All okay. Any opposed?
Nope.
None, I say.
Okay.
Members of the public?
All right, motion to close public questions. Okay. Your next, uh, presentation, your next, uh, witness?
Come on up, Jason. So Jason Hanrahan from Mode Architecture?
Sir, please raise your right hand. It's how we swear the testimony about giving us, Matt, we the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Jason Hanrahan, H-A-N-R-A-H-A-N.
Can we bring up your plans? Once he, his plug-
Yeah.
Thank you. They will like two feet, I apologize, I'm running out of, I'm running out of time. I'm that guy.
There we go.
Good, perfect. Nobody trip, we're, we're perfect. Nobody trip, they were perfect.
And Jason, you're an employee of Mode Architecture?
Yes, I am an owner of Mode Architecture, um, six twenty-one Lake Ave, uh, Asbury Park.
And as the owner of Mode Architecture, uh, you work with, uh, your staff in order to prepare designs, including the one presented this evening?
Yes, that is correct.
And have you worked with, uh, Dan Contatore on the design who presented at the last hearing?
Yes, I have.
Um, and you're familiar with this application as well, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, um.
Just a second, do we need to get, um, someone in?
He already is.
Okay.
I have a question before you go any further, I know you're the owner, but I assume you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am, I am not licensed in the state of New Jersey, I'm not a licensed architect. I have, I have been before many boards through Monmouth Ocean County as well as Long Island. Uh, I have testified before planning and zoning boards, um, probably over about a dozen times, most recently in Seaside Heights. Uh, I have been in front of a board in Bradley Beach and Belmar, uh, most recently as well.
And they allow you to testify not being licensed?
They have allowed my expert testimony of twenty-one years of experience in this field.
Well, from, from the standpoint of what his testimony is that Dan did present at the last hearing, Dan is a licensed architect.
You work under Dan's license?
I was just.
I work under, that is correct.
Alright, so is it fair to say you're a staff architect versus a licensed architect that works?
Typically, it's a staff designer.
There's, excuse me, it's proper terminology, thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
Staff designer?
Yes, that is correct.
And you're, you're essentially going to explain the work that your colleague did on this project?
That is correct.
And you're not describing any technical architectural details as far as building codes and anything like that this evening, correct?
This evening's testimony does not have any of that included, correct?
Eric, you are a licensed architect, correct?
I am not licensed in the state of New Jersey.
You're a licensed architect someplace else?
My practice as a licensed architect in a similar manner.
Okay, alright.
If it's acceptable to the board, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What can I accept as?
Yeah, just as long as, you know, you don't give us anything new, you know, you gotta cover it because we really can't have you going outside the scope of the services you provide to Mr. Contatore.
Correct, of course, I mean, yes.
Just from a technical point of view, okay, go right ahead.
So one of the, um, issues that was addressed at the last hearing related to the front facade, um, and some of the changes.
Can you open the plans that I sent you?
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, did I swear, I swore you, right?
Yes, you did, yes.
Yes, you did.
Ricky, tell me, you know.
Yeah, he did.
We had the mix-up with, with the power cord, yeah.
Yeah, I remember you raising your hand, spelling your last name.
Yep, while he was doing the power cord, you did.
Um, okay, so.
So on the record, you're sworn, right?
That is correct, yes. So, um, uh, the changes made to the layout of this building is, are minor based off of the comments from the previous hearing. Um, the most, the most, um, important change is this front facade here, so obviously we have the mouse issue. On the, this plan's orientated slightly different than Matt Wilder's site plan, so on the left side is Maze Three here. The facade itself has been pulled back to, uh, the board's concern of the facade needed a little more interest. So we moved, we pulled the facade back to create a more kind of interesting facade and allowed a kind of focal point of the entry. So, um, if you focus your eyes on the left side here, I'll, I'll show you where that looks like on the exterior elevation. So what that did was it allowed us to pull back the upper portion of the building and create that left side entrance, it's a more focal point, and then create a focused retail storefront. And then along with the undulation of the facade, we also incorporated, uh, some more, um, brick detailing. We added the herringbone details between the floors and the, um, the brick soldier courses above and below the windows. So from an aesthetic standpoint, that's the major change of the building, um, that we tried to incorporate from last, last hearing to now based off of your comments. Um, along with that.
Well, before you switch.
Okay.
You also pulled in some, um, detail between that first floor retail area and that stairwell area is correct, as well, correct?
Yes, that is correct, so we tried to incorporate some of that, we brought it in to create that, you know, focused entry and separate it from the retail.
And the, um, the brick at the top of the windows on the second floor are, um, at the same height of the stairwell windows?
Yes, that is correct.
And then same thing at the, at the, uh, bottom of the windows on the first floor, or I should say the second floor?
That.
Um, that also mimics that same pattern across the front of the building?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Alright. Um, and in addition to that, uh, you also made some changes to the rooftop, which is no longer a deck, it's now just a maintenance area?
Yes, to, to piggyback off what Matt Wilder had said before, uh, there is no, um, amenities to the tenants on the rooftop. Now it is just a, you know, a maintenance area with utilities, um, and no tenants will have access to that rooftop area.
And you heard the testimony of Matt regarding lighting and those kinds of things?
That is correct.
And you don't have any issues with the, the testimony there, is that?
We have no issues with that.
Can you go back one page if you don't mind?
Sure.
I don't believe we have these plans. The plans that I have in the package we received for tonight's meeting. Where it says September twenty-seventh, am I right?
When are they dated? Sorry.
We have to update this. It says.
I'll zoom right in, hold on.
It was seven twenty-one.
Yeah.
What are these dated?
Well, sorry, nine thirty, nine thirty-one. Twenty.
I think these are dated three thirty twenty-one.
No, nine.
They were revised.
Seven nine twenty-one, that's the date on them.
Seven twenty-one twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one, seven oh nine twenty-one.
Yeah, I don't think we have a revised.
We don't have a revised.
Are you looking at nine thirty twenty? No, these were submitted. Irene, these were definitely submitted. I submitted probably three times.
Seven nine.
I think it's only the first page.
Yeah, so the first page is dated differently.
Yeah, the first pages.
The rest of it, the rest is dated.
Pages are dated.
Except the windows on the second and third floor and the floor plans that I have do not reflect the rendering. Do you have?
May I look at your, yes, it shows a, just a regular old window.
Make sure I'm on the right place, I have so many.
That's them.
Yeah, I did, I did the same.
No, this is, this is, um.
Right, but I think it has the same set in both packages.
That's how it's dated, one.
Yeah, I have the same plans over there.
Yeah, like that's, so you may very well have submitted them, however, I think what we ended up with is two copies of the same plan.
So you don't.
That's not gonna land.
You can see right above there.
Alright, yeah, yeah, this is, this is the.
You don't have this date, there's no date here.
Yeah, the, the plans that were submitted don't show that really in the facade either.
Yeah, so we haven't seen, we haven't seen updated plans until now, am I correct?
I, I think.
Okay.
Let's, let's, let me just check the website to see what was.
I.
Because I think you guys up there.
We got the windows, they're down, they're from the room. And they are now these same.
Yeah, these plans still show this.
So while the, they're diff, we did bubble these specific changes, so for your reference, we, I can, I can walk you through that. When you can see, I mean, the only change is that front facade here as well as the notation on the rooftop area.
And the windows.
That's being mimicked.
Stairwell.
Yeah, so. And I'll, obviously that's indicated here in these images here where you see the difference.
Yeah.
Which mimics these plans.
Yep.
For data.
Yeah, but we have the renderings, just not these plans.
Okay.
It's fine, I just had, it just wasn't matching up.
We'll make sure.
Hard copies, do you have hard copy of the relationship?
I, I think that I have the same situation.
Yeah.
Everyone else has.
Yeah, I think the, on the website it has, um.
Yeah.
It has eight nineteen, I mean, four nineteen.
Right, so the plan.
For those two items.
We have some of this.
Okay, so let me, let me walk you through what's on the screen here at the moment, Ben. So the facade you see here in, in elevation mimics the facade you see in these renderings for reference. Um, so you could start to see the detailing that we spoke about before, we have that kind of, uh, front entry to the apartment area. And then we defined retail with the storefront and, um, more traditional windows above that, that, that work in the neighborhood. Um, the rear of the building you see here is, uh, the next bubble. Uh, we removed the, um, brick veneer and it is now a stucco facade on the sides and rear of the building. Um, the rear, the sides are, are minimal in respect of the fact that there's adjacent building connected to us. And then the rear is the, uh, the, the major portion with the, the design change. And again, the front facade is, you know, as we indicated here. And then obviously we indicate, uh, the, the rooftop areas, we have no, no longer having amenities up there, no access to the, the public and just, um, a low screening around the, uh, mechanical units above.
So the.
Thank you.
The most significant change is that front facade?
The most significant architectural change is the front facade.
But those changes were done in accordance with our prior feedback.
Correct.
Yeah.
Can you switch to the elevation?
Absolutely.
Is the glass in the upper floor of the stairwell, is that frosted or clear?
Uh, it'll be, it'll be a clear glass, you'll be able to see through it.
And that's only in the stairwell?
This is the stairwell, so as you access down to the bottom, yeah.
What's the, uh, the stairwell that goes up to the, um, rooftop?
The stair does have access and a man door at the roof to exit to the, uh, to the rooftop area. You see on the very top left, kind of in this image there, it says enclosed access stair. Um, and that's just, uh, have the same, similar stuff up finish, again, that's setback about twenty feet off of the front facade. So you, doesn't really give you an accurate kind of visual here, but, you know, as the stair kind of comes up, it's in the back.
But it's not with, it's not within any required setbacks?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, but when you're, my point was when you're standing on the ground, uh, even at Main Street, it's gonna be tough to really even see that?
That is correct.
Right? Step back quite a ways.
Um, so there won't be any, will anyone see it on, uh, whether it be first or on Main, the mechanicals on the roof?
So they're even, they're even further back than that access, so that would be a no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any visual connection to them from the ground floor.
From the ground, first, first or on Main?
That is correct.
Yeah, go back to the plan.
Screening's been replaced, the screening was taken off.
Yeah, we had, I don't know what happened there, the last hearing, we had the screening on there and then when the plans were revised, the screening came off. But if you can just go to the plan again for the rooftop, uh, that shows that screening area? I think it's on the, uh, so that screening area is where the four, uh, A C unit mechanical closure is, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Uh, and if you could just show the facade as well, so that the board can see that?
Let me show you the side elevation, it's probably easier to see. So you see it here on that lower elevation, uh, where it's situated. Again, on that lower, on the bottom elevation, the retail entry is on your left, that's the orientation.
So if I'm looking from First Avenue, it's, it's at the top?
Correct.
And that also sits back from that side as well?
Yes, and it's centered on the roof, so it's quite a ways off the, uh, off the facade.
Okay. And you, and you also see that the roof, um, stairwell has an angled roof as well, so that where the actual uh, top of it is, is even further setback.
That's correct, so we, we minimize the impact visually, so it's the actual angled part of the roof clearance from the stairs is actually set back about eight feet off the front facade as it is where it starts. So, um, visually, we tried to minimize the impact as best we could.
And this is a typical treatment for that type of situation?
Yes, that's correct.
So. Let's mark this type of plan as being evident as Exhibit A six.
Close call.
Yes, and what's the, what's the date of the most recent revision?
Date seven nine twenty-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Seven nine?
Yeah.
And I guess we should probably mark the, um, um, these as well. These have not been marked. Alright.
Elevation.
The updated renderings?
Were they submitted as one exhibit or are they two exhibits?
They are one.
Together, they're one?
Yeah. So that will be Exhibit A seven. And those will be the.
That's the color render.
Color renderings.
Two pages? Great. And, um, Jason, you don't have any issue with submitting this most recent plan to mimic that elevation, correct?
Correct.
Correct. The hard copy, I mean?
Yes.
I don't think I have any other questions for Jason as far as the changes based upon the last meeting, uh, I think we've gone through.
Who's going to be going through, uh, the planner's report?
Planner.
Okay.
He is our next witness.
Does, uh, anyone on the board have any questions?
I just think the redesign is really nice.
Thank you.
Gets a really nice details, it, real nice, uh, streetscape additions.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I agree, I think it's an improvement from the last.
It is, it's really very nice design. Any, anyone else from the board that would like to ask any questions? Okay, can we open to the public, please? Any questions to the architect?
None.
There's somewhere out in the.
No public, okay, let's close it up. Okay, um, before we go to the next witness, can we take a five minute?
Thank you, you read my mind.
I tried, Jack.
Thank you.
Motion. Motion. Second.
Thank you, all paper.
Aye.
Five minute break.
Okay.
No, no, it's a little more.
I want to get this.
Sure, just a second.
Okay, that's fine.
You qualified here before.
Yeah, but not, yeah, but not in the last meeting, so I still have to get sworn in.
No, no, I know that, but you've.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay, Mayor John Morris absent, Councilwoman, um, Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella is absent, Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Tealer.
Here.
Eric Jalfo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kriza.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, just one thing, then, Mr. Henry has something for the architect, if we could just, just slip in another question, please?
Absolutely. Just a quick question, I just, just happened to spot it, on A two hundred.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the front elevation, you've got an indication, uh, on there that it is a stucco finish. You see that up on the upper left-hand corner, A three in the tri, I'm sorry, the, uh, three in the triangle?
Yeah.
Okay, and you, if you go down to the, uh, back elevation, uh, three in the triangle is a stucco finish.
The thr, well, it's just the revision three, the stucco finish is called that as a revision as well as that facade change. That's where we bumped out and changed the window type. So it's actually not indicating the stucco finish, it's just indicating it's a revision from the last issue.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, maybe you ought to label that, though, on that, uh, front elevation and to revise this to what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify. Thanks.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Psalm we swear that the testimony about giving this man with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Will you state your name for the record and spell it?
My name is Brian Leff, L E F F.
Thank you.
And Brian, you are a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Uh, and have you testified before this board before?
Yes, I have.
And you've been qualified by this board before?
Yes, I have.
Uh, unless you want me to ask any of the questions, I would submit, uh, Mr. Leff as an expert in planning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Brian, um, you've been hired by the. So Brian, you've been hired by the applicant, AP Shore Holdings LLC, to provide planning testimony and provide the reasons for the justifications for the variances for this application this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you've heard all the testimony from the applicant and applicant's experts at the last two hearings, the virtual hearing and tonight's hearing, correct?
Correct.
And if you could explain why you think the variances are justified and why you think the proposal is, should be approved this evening?
Sure. And since it was a long time since we started this application, I'm going to begin with just a little bit of a recap to describe the property, just to make sure that everyone's clear what we're talking about. So the tract is known as Block 2602, Lot 2. It's commonly referred to as 810 to 812 Main Street. The tract is uniquely shaped in an L configuration. While it's not considered a corner lot, it contains frontage on Main Street and First Avenue. The corner lot, Lot 1, is currently occupied by the Home Drug Store, which is a two-story brick building that appears to provide retail use on the first floor and residential occupancy on the second floor. The adjacent property to the south is also occupied by a two-story mixed-use building containing the Celebrations Boutique on the first floor and residential occupancy on the upper floor. The property to the east is occupied by a three-story residential use. The subject tract is currently covered with asphalt and concrete surfaces as well as a freestanding one-story Masonry garage. The lot represents the only gap in building frontage on this Main Street block. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing garage and construct an infill development consisting of a three-story building and associated off-street parking. The building will contain retail space on the first floor along with a total of four residential units on the upper floors. The current plan provides a total of six off-street parking spaces in accordance with the land development ordinance. Although the adjacent buildings are both two-story structures, the majority of the structures on this block are three-story buildings. The tract is located entirely within the newly created B business zoning district and partially within the commercial shopping zone designation of the Main Street redevelopment plan. I know that's a lot to follow, but this is why we're here. The proposed use is permitted and encouraged within both land use designations. While the use is consistent with the goals of the city, some relief from the Asbury Park land development ordinance is being sought. This includes maximum lot cover or building cover of 100% within the redevelopment area, whereas 90% is permitted. Maximum impervious coverage of 100% within the redevelopment area, whereas 90% is permitted. A rear setback distance of zero feet as measured to the redevelopment district boundary, whereas 10-foot setback to the rear property line is required. And a two-way drive aisle width of 14 feet is provided, whereas 22 feet is required. Now, the tract is situated with frontage on New Jersey State Highway Route 71, which is Main Street, and is identified as being partially located within the Main Street redevelopment area. It's specifically located within the community shopping zone. As noted in the redevelopment plan, Main Street is a critical piece of the overall effort to revitalize the city of Asbury Park. One of the goals of the community shopping center zone is to encourage property owners to develop surface parking lots with multi-story buildings containing ground floor retail space. This is exactly what's being proposed. The proposed development is consistent with the plan for the Main Street redevelopment area. Now, the tract is uniquely bisected by the Main Street redevelopment area boundary limit, creating a condition where zoning regulations governing the development of a property can be confusing and sometimes conflicting. In situations such as this, in order to evaluate appropriate development techniques, the single tract is sometimes viewed as two separate lots with differing zoning criteria. This is the driving condition responsible for the variance relief being sought this evening. While this approach is helpful in evaluating the impacts of the differing zones, it can distort the perception of the overall proposal. When considering the full impact of the relief being sought, it's also important to view the relief in the context of the entire proposal and not just the isolated portion that relates to each set of zoning regulations. So looking at the variance, the first one I'd like to look at is lot cover, where the upper floors of the proposed building will occupy 100% of the portion of the tract, which is located within the Main Street redevelopment area, whereas the redevelopment plan permits a maximum of 90% of the tract to be covered by buildings. When the entire tract is considered, the proposed development represents a lot or building cover of approximately 48%, which would otherwise comply with the ordinance. The variance relief to permit 100% lot cover is a technical issue caused by the boundary of the redevelopment area. The building provides a ground-level parking under the residential units, and the building actually only occupies about 1,200 square feet of the ground floor in that area. This represents approximately 50% of the portion of the tract located within the redevelopment area, so it does comply with the intent of the ordinance. Similarly, the rear setback of the proposed building is located on the redevelopment boundary line, whereas a rear yard setback distance of 10 feet is required within the redevelopment area. Now, the actual rear setback distance as defined in the land use ordinance and measured to the property line is 29.2 feet, which would otherwise comply with the zoning regulations. However, as the property extends beyond the limit of the redevelopment area, a technical variance is required to permit the building at its proposed location. As the proposed building location provides for the required setback distance when measured to the property line, the intent of this ordinance is also met. And finally, we have impervious cover, where a variance is requested for a proposed lot cover of 100% within the commercial shopping zone, whereas a maximum of 90% is permitted within that zone and 100% is existing. The impervious cover limit only applies to the portion of the tract located within the Main Street redevelopment area. The B zone does not have a maximum impervious surface limit. As the redevelopment plan encourages buildings along the street frontage, it's anticipated that most pervious area will be located to the rear of the buildings which front on Main Street. While this holds true for this tract as well, the onsite landscape area is located outside the redevelopment district and is not included in the impervious cover calculation for the redevelopment area. The proposed improvements include a landscape strip along the eastern property line, which provides screening for the residential use. And overall, the applicant is proposing 95% of the track to be covered in impervious surfaces, which is identical to the existing conditions. There's no increase in the impervious cover. As the proposed impervious cover is identical to the existing conditions, there's no negative impacts associated with maintaining the condition. Further, as the proposed development provides an appropriate landscape area in an appropriate location and promotes the design intent of the Main Street redevelopment area, it's my professional opinion that this also is consistent with the intent of the ordinance.
Brian, before you continue, just so the board understands, perhaps this map, which is in the board's planner's letter, would be helpful?
That revised report, since Jeff was referring to it. That will be dated March 10th, '21, revised April 15th. 2021 CCH authored by Michael and Don.
That is correct.
So we will make that be whatever the next number is in sequence, please.
B2.
B2.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So just so the board can understand, on page 6 of 23, there's a map on that page?
Mm-hmm.
And that shows the difference between the B-zone and the MSRA-zone?
Yes, it does.
If you could just describe that, how that affects this property?
Well, in this property, as I described, it's an L-shaped property. The portion of the lot that faces on First Street is not within the redevelopment area, essentially where we have the parallel parking and two head-on parking spaces. The only portion of the tract that is in the redevelopment area is the full area of the building.
So the redevelopment area is the light gray shade?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And the other area is the B-area?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, if you can continue.
All right. So along with the design, the variances, there are some design waivers that are being sought from the standards identified in the B zoning district as well as the redevelopment area. Now, testimony has been provided by the appropriate professionals to justify those design waivers, so I don't believe there's any more testimony actually needed from me. And based on the testimony that was provided, in my professional opinion, the relief may be granted without negatively impacting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. So in conclusion, the applicant is proposing to redevelop Block 2602, Lot 2, with a three-story mixed-use building that contains retail on the ground level with residential units on the upper floors. The ground-level parking provided to the rear of the building partially under the residential units. Although the nature of the proposed improvements is consistent with the Asbury Park land development ordinance and the Main Street redevelopment plan, some relief is being sought. All requested variances are driven by the unique location of the redevelopment boundary line, which bisects the property. In all cases, it's my professional opinion that the requested relief may be granted without substantial impairment to the land development ordinance or the Main Street redevelopment plan, and the relief may be granted without any substantial detrimental impacts to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public.
So with respect to the minimum rear yard setback variance requested for the redevelopment area, that, what's proposed is going to have the back of the building on the portion that L shapes towards First Avenue, correct?
Correct. The back of the building is coincidental with the zone boundary line.
And how far is the back of the building to the neighboring residential property to the east approximately?
I believe I testified it was 29.2 feet.
And lot coverage, the lot right now is existing with substantial amount of impervious coverage, right?
Correct. The proposed impervious coverage is identical to what's existing.
And the lot coverage setback, again, is really relative to that same issue where you have the boundary line changes in the middle of bisecting this property?
Yes, as I mentioned, all of the variances are being driven solely by the location of the district boundary line.
And as far as the parking that's proposed, do you think that's adequate for the uses proposed on the site?
The parking meets the ordinance requirement.
All right. And as a planner, do you think that parking is going to be utilized for the commercial space, or what do you envision there?
Oh, I hate to speculate, but from my experience, I would believe that most people using the commercial space will walk to this property. I don't see a whole lot of people driving around to the back of this property looking for a parking space. I believe it's just going to be the residents parking back there.
So for the most part, you're anticipating walkers or parking on-street on Main Street?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
And we're providing a buffer strip even though it's minimal and doesn't meet the ordinance, is there a justification for that?
We are providing the buffer strip at the appropriate location. It doesn't happen to be within the redevelopment area, so it doesn't count towards a pervious surface that would lower that 100% coverage. But between the landscaping that's being proposed and the fence that's being proposed, I think we have an adequate visual buffer.
In order to establish an adequate area for parking and drive aisle, there's not much more that can be added to?
No. The only other thing that could be done would be to remove the concrete from the existing residential property that encroaches onto our property, but I don't think that's in anyone's best interest nor is it necessary.
And in the planner's letter, there's a reference to the mechanical screening, but we have identified in the actual plans that there will be mechanical screening on the upper floor.
Yes.
Correct? We've, the revised architectural plans address the minimum openings and transparency on that ground floor?
Yes, I believe all the architectural testimony had been given.
Okay. Do you think that trash is going to be adequately addressed with the changes to the plans that were presented this evening?
Based on the review, the information provided by the engineer with the additional trash storage, I believe yes.
And adequate access to the building from both the parking area as well as to the, through the front facade is adequate in your opinion?
Again, both the design professionals had testified to, yes.
And drive, the dragway design itself, is there much that we can do with that design other than what's being proposed?
I think there was, I believe there was a lot of testimony from the engineer at the first hearing relating to the circulation, different ideas. So I believe, based on the?
You don't have to believe, because it's a question for the engineer, it's more relevant for him.
Fair enough.
And he stated that.
That usually works. Good. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything that we haven't already talked about. I don't have any other questions for Brian at this time.
I have a question. All right. Brian, I assume, based on your testimony, that you're really saying that this is a classic C1 variance?
Absolutely, there is. Given the zone boundary line, yes.
And that is to the redevelopment plans, I believe you were also intending to state that it does not have a significant negative impact on the master plan as well?
Right, the master plan, the zone plan, or the redevelopment plan.
That's all I need to know.
Just a question, a technical question. You didn't present yourself at the Wensworth Architect. I thought you were going to testify a little bit about the plan, but I'm going to ask you as a planner at a Wensworth.
Okay.
Or a question, do you think there's enough room for those arbor bylaws to be in that two-foot lane there?
Two-foot, no, we probably have to justify, with the fence in that location so it can overcome, I think we can look at an alternate for that area.
Okay.
Michael, are you, are you okay with all the responses to the planner's report?
They've addressed, they've addressed everything that we talked about, either through the architectural testimony and the testimony and following the planning testimony. I don't have any questions about the conclusions that Mr. Leff has proffered on a board agrees with them. He's provided enough information and testimony to support the granting of the C variances as well as the design exceptions, which have been reduced significantly since the term of extension.
Okay. And we also have the, because the drawings on page 10 and 11 seem to be older?
Yes, yes, we didn't have an updated report with these.
With these, we did not?
No.
Okay.
But we reviewed them.
Right, right. Okay. So anyone on the planning board have any questions of the planner?
Just a quick question. If you go to CCH report and look at page 16, you'll notice that the parking floor of the corner store, the drugstore, is headed from First Avenue. And you're putting in a driveway just to the east of the building and their parking lot. On the, one of the site plans, I forget which sheet it was, there's an indication that there's a sidewalk along the rear of the building that leads out and stops at the property line. I wonder if that might not be extended across the existing sidewalk to the curb line with the new concrete that would indicate to people coming into the drugstore that they shouldn't be parking there, that they should be parking at the drugstore, the side of the drugstore, rather than in that driveway. Is that a viable?
That would be a question for the engineer, and I believe that was discussed at the first hearing a little bit. Right now, I believe the intention is that that sidewalk would come out and meet the existing concrete that's already out there in the right-of-way, so we're not proposing any work within the right-of-way.
I understand that. What I'm asking is, do you think it would be advisable to extend that sidewalk through the right-of-way, where it would give you an indication of a new sidewalk as a delineation between the existing parking for the drugstore and what you're proposing for this?
Well, one thing I would say is that you're, it's going to be a concrete sidewalk crossing a concrete apron. I don't know that you're going to get that distinction that you're looking for.
I'm just asking your?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to benefit, the only way you would be able to do it would be to change the material, and I think that's going to create a lot of confusion in the vehicular circulation.
Thanks.
Do you think that there's going to be any kind of, as Mr. Henry said, confusion as to from the people that are coming into the drugstore versus, and going into your?
I don't think so. I think with the addition, I think with the addition of a formal driveway that goes back, I think that's going to kind of give people the clue that you're not supposed to park in front of that and block it.
It's going to delineate that so? It's going to delineate that, so-
Yeah. I think the driveway itself is going to provide the delineation that you're looking for, especially with curbs on either side of the driveway.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is there a residential parking requirement for the Main Street redevelopment area?
There is, and we meet that requirement.
What is the requirement?
I believe it was one per unit?
0.9.
0.9?
Right. When they come up, they come to-
Yeah. So, we have four parking spaces for the residential and two for the commercial, technically.
I'm sure you discussed this. So, all the parking, leaving this parking lot, they're going to be backing out?
Yes. And there was considerable discussion on that in the first hearing. We analyzed a lot of different ways, but there was really no good way to get people to pull out forward. So, having, meeting the requirement for the parking seemed to be the best bet, rather than reducing the parking and still not being able to pull out forward.
But if you take a look also at, you know, the home drugs, they're all backing out.
And so is the chicken face across the street.
I know. It's different from pulling all the way in behind a building and backing out. I'm just-
And that's only if-
I'm just concerned about sightline.
And that's only if all the spaces are full. If some of those spaces are not parked, there is opportunities for people to pull into those spaces and make K-turns and turn around and pull out forward. But we're assuming that all those spaces are full and that those turning movements would not be available, although they probably will be at most times.
What is the traffic line between the parked car and the public line?
It's 14 feet, I believe.
I'm sorry if I'm being redundant, but what safety features do you have for pedestrians?
That would be for the, a question for the engineer.
Okay.
Actually, if the parking spaces are assigned, chances are for the most part, as you say, you can make a back into five and six.
Right. Like I said, if those are not filled, you can pull out. There will be opportunities for people to pull out forward. You're not always going to have to pull out backwards, but we are assuming that that would be, as a worst-case scenario, how people would most likely get in and out.
I think that we'd probably like to suggest which ones, which four should be for the residents versus the two that are for commercial use. And you would know better, I mean, actually, maybe the engineer would know better, which ones would be best for them to be identified as resident-only, so that you can-
Yeah, I couldn't answer that.
The backing in and backing out might be safer.
Yeah. That I would defer to the engineer for the best location of those two.
I suspect 1, 2, and 4 if they were-
Yeah. We could make that, we could put that into a request.
Plus to address, there was a discussion by the engineer of what pedestrian safety implementations he's drawn for him, so you're going to be receiving that as well. This has to be reviewed by Jason and-
Yes.
Michael for sufficiency, to make sure there's pedestrian safety and the like.
Well, we can put that as a-
Condition of approval.
As a condition.
Thank you.
I have no other questions, no other witnesses, although I guess we, no other questions from the board, I guess we can open to the public.
Anything else? Anyone else? I don't see any public.
We do it formally anyway, just open and close.
All right. Let's open for public questions.
A second. All right. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Any opposed? None. I have it.
And let's move to close?
None. No members in the public? I suggest you close.
I'll second the closure.
If you're all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Does the board have any comments that they would like to make about this project? Since we don't have any more witnesses, anything?
I would just like to say, I think that the ultimate design of the project is quite fitting for the location on Main Street. The architecture of the ground-floor commercial uses, the apartments above, are exactly what the Main Street redevelopment plan and the master plan called "argue for." And while there are some oddities related to parking and the site access, I think we have to take those into consideration with the general context of how Main Street is meant to be used as a primarily, you know, street parking and blocking district. And I'm not sure we should be bending over backwards to make, you know, it work any better than it already does. I think you made tremendous attempts to make it work, and it has more parking than anything else on Main Street. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just had a little question.
Go ahead.
That's change of that plant, of the plant material. Is that something that we would just submit for, you know, how would we make-
I think right now, they're, they have inkberry on the plan with the arc-revoting. I think they could just, I think inkberry. The fence is there, so I'm not so concerned about the screening anymore. The plant material is the way to solve it.
Yeah. I think it'd actually be better with this thing. Inkberry, anyway.
What is the name of that?
What?
Inkberry?
Is it going, inkberry it is?
Yes.
Great. So, note it for the record that it's in the record.
How's that spelled?
I-N-K-B-E-R-R-Y, just like it sounds.
It's like fire. I just wanted to show-
It's like the younger.
Yeah.
Anything else, Yvonne?
I was just going to say, I think it's a great project, definitely needed in our Main Street area. My only concern is the safety of pedestrians in that driveway area and that there would be whatever notifications, whatever design you could do to make sure that pedestrians are aware that cars could be backing out.
Actually, Yvonne, I think that was, what they propose is an improvement over what is next door.
Yes.
And I think that it's a pretty good solution to a pretty thorny problem.
Yeah. Any condition of approval for that? I would make sure it's subject to Jason's review and approval, make sure it's adequate under engineer standards-
Yep.
For the backing out and all that sort of stuff.
Do we, let's have, anything else from the planning board or from our professionals? Any comments? Okay. Let's open it up formally for public comment.
Who did that?
No, that was questions.
Oh.
This is the final comment.
Cross-examination. Oh, I stand corrected.
That's okay.
I'll take my medicine the next time.
I have a motion by Eric Yellico.
Aye. Oh, second.
Second. Hold on, hold on.
What is this, where, a bunch of amateurs?
And I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Open to public comment.
Close the public comment.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Rick Lambert and a second by Lonkey.
Aye.
Lonkey.
All have a drink.
I'd like public comment.
Now, deliberation and vote.
Okay. Let's review what the conditions.
Okay. I have, in generality, I have the backing out. Any of the engineering details for pedestrian safety, I'm going to, I'll develop that with Jason and Michael. But we know what we're looking at. The trash removal, I just want to note that the bins are going to be ruled out for, on, within their own property and picked up and put back by building personnel. Parking space designation, business versus commercial spaces.
Yes. For, keeping in mind the safety of pedestrians.
Right. Let's see. I may have Main Street redevelopment resolution, some standard conditions of approval, but I don't remember them because we haven't done one in a while. But there's, they're very performant and straightforward. And that's realistic.
Resigned the lighting.
Yeah, the lighting.
Yes. Okay. The lighting as well. I'm sorry. I had down here for lighting as well.
Change in the landscape?
Yeah. The inkberry is-
That's already done on the, lighting redesign.
Fence design, chubby wood.
Yeah. The fence is cedar.
Cedar. Cedar. Okay.
We also talked about, not that I know what a bubbler system is, but we talked about that.
Okay. Jason, we need some language on that?
Sure.
Okay. So, we have that.
Jason does much better engineering speak than me.
All right. So, we're, and we're going to be adding the light to the east side, right? So, there's quite, there's a number of lighting items there.
Yeah. They're going to be omitted from the neighbor's property, moved over and all that.
Right. And there'll be no 12-foot light. There won't be one 12-foot light there.
Yeah. The floodlight will be eliminated if they were the baller light and the under building component light.
There's, you're going to be, you're maybe reconfiguring the sidewalk where the bike rack is to make it more, so that people can actually walk past the bikes. You're going to be working that out, because right now where it is-
Possibly changing the location of bike rack.
Right.
Because it's access.
Yeah. It's pretty much changing the location of the bike rack so that people can actually walk by. Those are the things that I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything? Anything?
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the application with the, what we just said?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick Lambert and a second by Jim Henry. And those who recuse as Mayor John Moore, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton, and Michael Magdella, Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Yellico.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you. Application approved.
Great project. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, move to close. Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Rick, you were motioning. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.